I'd like to call this work session of the Silver Falls School Board to Order. Thank you everyone for coming, it's nice to see a good audience again. Just for clarification for the audience, we don't have public comment during our work sessions, just a time for the board to get together and chat. So, any thoughts that come up, you can send us emails or wait till the next round of our session, come and speak publicly. To get things rolling, we have a few items on our consent agenda tonight. Is there a motion for approval?
Move for approval, second.
Moved in second, and all in favor?
And I.
opposed? Okay, let's send agenda passes. Onto discussion items, use of Slater Street campus as a school site. Andy had a couple of things in our packet, copies of the PowerPoint from the last meeting, maps of the campus. Andy, do you want to start off with any new information you have?
Yeah, I don't know, there's so much new information, but I can highlight a couple of things that may be helpful to your discussion and consideration. First, refer you to this document, you can try to receive the map of the footprint of the Slater campus, it doesn't reflect two-story portions, like an elevation design, but it does show you the basic footprint of the campus on one page, and then on the second page, in outline form, is the two- and three-story portion that is facing Slater Street, and then also in dotted line outline form, is the former Ag shop, wood shop. And those were the two areas that I know Wally had mentioned at the last board meeting, and was part of your conversation in subsequent follow-up, excuse me, in subsequent conversation with you, and Julie had the question about what's the current uses of those portions of the building were, and I can briefly describe that. The original two- and three-story portion is designated as educational storage. It's essentially if you were to walk through there, nearly every one of those classrooms is empty, with the exception of a couple of classrooms, if you're familiar with the layout of the whole high school in the business wing, where there must be 200 or 300 student desks in there, and tables, and a few other items that we kept from the Slater campus that still have some value, and could be used in the future for school. Otherwise, that portion of the building sits empty. The multipurpose room is also designated as storage, as is the classrooms that are inside the, or do not have access from the outside, the two or three classrooms, you can see them here, it's designated classrooms, it's on the bottom right of the illustration, classrooms, says Classroom C2, Classroom D1, Classroom D2. The classroom D1 and D2 are actually outside of the main structure, those last two classrooms, so they by definition are not decommissioned, but everything west of there and inside the former two- and three-story, or you know, high school, the two- and three-story portion is decommissioned, it is educational storage. And then if you move to the center, the center portion of the illustration, it says Ag Metal Shop constructed in 1941, Wood Shop constructed in 1961. Those are used currently, the old Ag shop is used predominantly for van storage, it's as much as it can be convenient, because it's large, it has two level doors, and you can drive vans in and out of there, so it's been nice to have, to be able to keep the vans out of the rain.
However, the roof's leaking pretty bad?
The roof's leaking pretty bad, yeah, the blue tarp up there is pretty evident. The wood shop is the former high school wood shop, and it was constructed obviously 20 years later based upon this information, and the wood shop is used periodically in any given week by our district-wide maintenance employee Gerald Jensen, and so there are still some wood tools in there, table saw, radiator alarm saw, a couple of work benches and things like that. I want to direct your attention to the upper center portion, and it says Auto Shop 1969, and that was, again, the former auto shop of Silverton High School, that's currently the grounds shop, and that is also used, actually that's used more extensively than the Ag or the wood shop, that's used on a daily basis, it's the office for two employees. And it's my belief that, in fact, there is, there's sufficient room in the old auto shop if you were to remove the wood shop and the old Ag shop, there is sufficient room in the old auto shop for the addition of those wood shop tools, and for that to be a maintenance, a combined groundskeeping maintenance shop for any future use. So, based upon the conversation at the last meeting and Wally's proposal, those would be the two items that would be removed, potentially removed, would be the center two- and three-story portion, and then the old Ag shop, and those were also considerations, or not considerations, they were part of the planning efforts for the last bond in May of '13, part of the efforts with conversion of the Slater campus at that time.
Okay.
So, there you go.
I know we've had a lot of discussion about the use of Slater K3 versus a junior high, so we can talk about that tonight, and then also tied into this is Wally's, the proposal Wally brought last time to give a little more direction to the scope of the bond, certainly not the total scope, but just give a little more direction of the way we're, way we as a board want to move. And we said last, at the meeting last week, that we would make that an action item tonight, so I'm just going to read those real quick before we start our discussion. Give the district direction to develop scope and cost for a projected bond potentially targeted for the November election that would include the following: Remove the old three-story section of the Slater Street campus, remove the Ag Science Building, remodel and upgrade the remaining single-story structures on the Slater Street campus, infill the Slater Street campus with new construction to provide new educational space, provide safety and security upgrades at all of the district's school buildings that are used for students per our consultant's reports, provide technology updates in our buildings. So, that is going, those proposals are going to be an action item later. I'll start, since I got something fresh in my mind right now. I like these proposals, I think, I think we, in my opinion, we should adopt those tonight, because I think, I think we're using the Slater campus for some purpose, whether that be a K3 or a junior high, is a great idea, we already have that asset, I think it's a good idea to use that. I need to, and I think, I think we need to nail down more cost figures before we can decide what's that, what that's going to be for sure, you know, looking at volumetric construction and, and all that kind of thing, we need to, because I know, because we need to keep, we need to really watch the dollars on the bond, you know, in my mind, we need to keep it under 20 million, but, but that, you know, it all comes, a lot of it comes down to dollars, so I don't think we're there yet where we can decide the specific use of that building, but I think these proposals give really good direction in kind of where we're moving. And I think it's, you know, we have that asset over there, it's a shame to let it sit there. So, as we decided the last meeting to close Eugene Field, I think, one of the options we talked about, you know, for the Slater is the way we should go, but I just think these give really good direction, they're pretty clear.
Should we specify in there whether we wanted to look at this K3 or 678?
I purposely left that big, because I didn't think we were ready to decide that yet, I thought we could talk about just creating space, dollars per square foot numbers, and try to get our arms around what the cost is per the various scope items.
That should be about the same then?
I would expect it would be.
What about student, how many students would be in that building, should we put a number on that?
It depends whether it's a K3 or a 6, K3 you're going to have, you know, four grades, 68 you're going to have three, so it could be 150 different stuff.
And that's kind of what I'm getting at, because it makes a lot, the site makes a lot more sense than 678, long-term, you know.
Agree with the cost?
You know, yeah, and then it, yeah.
I think we can come with metrics, get some ideas around scope and dollars per square foot, we can kind of modulate based on your discussion, I mean, that might even help our discussion down the road decide, if we're going to do a K3 or a 68.
Yeah, what about earthquake standards, because a lot of this area is older buildings, you know, should we, we should probably bring those up to code, the older, the older buildings, because, you know.
That'd be part of the remodel cost?
Yeah, but it would be bringing them up to current code.
That's my expectation.
Okay.
I think we'd be forced to, if I'm not, I may be incorrect there, but I think we'd be forced to.
Yeah, I'm just making sure that we got it covered.
Andy, did you have a comment?
No, no, go ahead Tom.
Did you have a comment on the numbers, Andy?
I was only going to comment that the actual enrollment numbers is partially based upon what the programming of the building is, if we put three or four district-wide special education programs in there, that the enrollment, the enrollment is going to be different than if it was, if there were no non-special education programs or ELL programs, et cetera, so that would all come out with, with that refinement of that determination.
Okay, so this is just a quick, you know, it's kind of a...
I don't think it's quick, there's a lot, there's a lot of work to be done there, that's kind of what I'm getting at, if we're going to have any possibility of hitting a November bond, there's a lot of work needs to be done, because we throw around a lot of numbers, but we don't know really what we're talking about yet.
Right, right. Yeah, I guess I just know that that site makes much more sense than 678, and so I would, I would be, you know, as much detail as we can give these folks.
Of course.
We're going to nail it down, you know, I don't know if that's too much detail to put in this document, but that's what we should be doing, I think, you know, to get the, get the numbers quickly as we can.
Yeah, I think we need to get numbers as quickly as we can, but I think for this document, I think it's, in my mind, it's better just to keep it general for educational purposes, just rather than, just because I don't think we're there yet, I don't think we have the all the information we need to nail down exactly what we're going to do.
I really think getting the numbers will help guide us, cut our future conversations too.
Okay.
I like this because, you know, I still, once in a while, I still hear people say, "Why are you putting kids back in the Slater building?", and this, this is something that says, "No, we're removing that old, you know, we're just laying a few things out."
Sure, sure.
Anybody else?
So, I'll jump in. This is an idea that was broached at the decision-making meeting to close Eugene Field, but one of the things that concerns me here is we have a very aggressive timeline for a bond proposal, and now that we've made the decision to close Eugene Field, it seems to me that we should consider other potential options that might actually be cost-effective and educationally sound for the district, rather than just go forward without exploring those options with something at the Slater Street site. I mean, I realize that there's been a lot of talk about that for a long time, but I'm not, I'm not certain, and I'm not convinced that that's the best option. And so the idea, as you probably all recall, that was floated last time, is the possibility of not building another building, and thereby saving that expense, reconfiguring attendance boundaries in the district, and adding on to Robert Frost, which is already designed for additional space to be built, and then looking at other strategic rural elementary schools, and adding on to those schools that would require changing attendance boundaries, but attendance boundaries are routinely changed in most school districts, and I bring that up all the time, because Salem Kaiser does it as a matter of public policy every two years, it's automatic, and it's, it's a new concept here to do that on such a regular basis, but it's the most effective way to manage the student population in your buildings, and I would like to see, and thereby maximize the use of those buildings. So, I'd like to see us talk about, at least talk about that option, so it's something that we haven't talked about prior, and it's something that I personally think we should explore.
Yeah, I, I know I kind of grouse a little bit, because we haven't had our strategic visioning process done to kind of help guide us on a lot of this stuff, and I, but on what we have had, is, there was some statement in there about, "Most teachers in the district agree that straight grade education provides better teaching environment", and we've got all these new standards coming down, down the pike, and that is, you know, that, that's a real possibility, you know, that we could get some straight grades in all these mixed-grade buildings, and maybe some better instructional results, it's a possibility. I don't know what it would cost to add on to all these little buildings, is that, you know, how do we explore that? Is there, is there a way, is there a way to find out that, now, I know that moving attendance boundaries is definitely controversial, I get that, but is there a way to say, "Boy, there's a lot of money to be saved, is it worth it?", you know, is there a way to get some numbers on what that would cost to do, at some of these outline, outline buildings?
Would we really add on to all the outlines, say we went ahead and did that, would we really want to go add on to some of these outline buildings, or just fill them to capacity using David's scenario?
It may be that, yeah, I don't know, it would just be, I don't know.
A lot of the buildings are at capacity already, that's, that's one of my concerns, a lot of, a lot of our buildings are already at capacity, very close to it, and one thing that, that I remember from the Long Range Facilities Task Force meetings a couple of years ago, is people in the community liked things the way they were, they didn't want to see change, they didn't want to see change, they liked, the people in the Kates liked their Kates, they, the people in town liked the transitions between the schools, and nobody wanted, you know, people didn't want to see change, which, you know, doesn't mean, doesn't mean you shouldn't do it, but, but if it's, if it's not broke, why fix it, I guess is part of my thinking also. So, and I think it'd be, you know, you could add, add one pod of Robert Frost, but it depends how many grades you're talking about putting there, that's, one pod is enough for one grade. You're talking about putting, I know, there was talk of a K5, well that'd be a huge school, it'd be 700 kids in a school, and that's, I think that's too big of a school for a K5, so, I'm just concerned about the numbers, and, I mean, the student populations, and... Andy, did you, you had sent us an email, was it last week, with the available spaces in the, in the Kates, you know, outline schools?
Based upon the current enrollment, yes.
Yeah, and what, I can't remember what that was, one...
And I don't have that in front of me, I think it was around 170 available slots, you currently have five schools that are, are very near capacity of your eight rural schools, and, and so you do have room for, I think it said about 170, and that's, and that's not giving any consideration to availability of grades, I know for a fact you have at least six schools that are full in the second and third grade right now already for next year, and so if, you know, if you were to adjust attendance boundaries and move students out and not do any construction, you, you don't have the room for that, it would require some form of construction, if that's something that you were, you were interested in doing, and...
Or deny transfers.
Or deny transfers, you're right.
That'd be a pretty big hammer too, but we could, you know...
Yeah, you gain about 100, and I think it's around 180 students net, and again, similar to attendance boundary changes, that's, that's an emotionally driven topic, and something that surely has some risk associated with it.
Transportation would be a long time issue as well.
Yeah.
I just don't know if there's, is there potential to save money on construction by that, by that route, you know, I know that, you know, is it, you know, straight grade instruction, trying to get to some, you know, we got some high standards coming down the line, Common Core standards, and we want to maintain our high test scores.
Depends on what you had to do, I would think it'd be fairly expensive to add on to any buildings, you know, I don't know why it wouldn't cost any less to add on at Butte Creek than it does at Mark, at Robert Frost, or, I don't know.
Right, yeah, I don't know, are there other buildings, you know, that are more ready to go than others, I don't know, I just think it'd be an interesting proposition.
And then do you add on to an Evergreen or a Pratum? You know, there's...
Yeah, I don't know, I imagine, I imagine some have better attributes to add on than others, but I just, I just, the idea of having straight grade, you know, our teachers are saying, "Straight grade is better instructions."
So, if I could just jump back in here, I don't think it makes sense at all to consider adding on any additional space to some of our buildings, they're just not set up for that, they're too old, for example, Evergreen, I mean, it's a beautiful historic building, but, and it's still functional, but it doesn't make sense to add on to that school, in my mind, but schools like Victor Point or Scotts Mills School, both of which have space, adequate land surrounding them, and, and that was a major issue with the decision to close Eugene Field, is the amount of space that was available to students, play area, for parking, for all that stuff, and traffic. So, if you have, you have those schools that are relatively modern, that you can add on to at lower cost, and achieve something really good educationally for the kids, and I think that it's kind of, it's pretty obvious, we haven't done the research yet, which I think we should do, obviously, but we haven't done the research yet, but it seems like kind of a no-brainer to me that you're not going to have the systems development charges and all of those related costs in a setting like Victor Point or Scotts Mills that you're going to have with the Slater Street site. That's going to be tremendously expensive in terms of the town of Silverton, system development costs, traffic costs, and all of that stuff. So, you're just going to have to deal with Marion County and the other sites, so, just...
Just, well, I mean, that sounds, that makes it sound really small, I don't want to minimize it, because Marion County is Marion County, but...
I just had to throw that one in.
Yeah, well, that's valid, but...
Yeah, I mean, it's, to jump on that a little bit, but just to think, I don't know, Silverton, it seems to be that our population, student population growth is increasing in town, and at some point, the in-town schools are going to be big, when do you say, "These schools are too big?", and when do we split them up? When do we do that?
But Tom, it's also increasing in the outline schools, Victor Point has been increasing, and not from transfers, it's from movement.
Yeah.
Butte Creek has, how many more kids do they have than they started with this year?
Yeah, about 15, I think.
Yeah, they have a fair amount more kids than when they started the year, and that's not from transfers, that's from movement.
Yeah, no, I know, it's just that question of how big, you know, is it time to say our in-town schools are now big enough, and we need to stop, you know, either build another school in town, or continuing to let them expand with the best educational size?
Yeah, I just think logistically with 170 spaces available, where are you going to move the kids? That's my...
Well, new construction.
Yeah.
New construction, and I don't know if you need, I don't know if there's system and develop, if you, you know, add in a couple, a couple classrooms, you know, four classrooms here and there, if they, I don't know what Marion County wants you to provide for system and development, do you have to provide more cafeteria space, or is it just simple classrooms? It might be a cheap alternative, I don't, I don't know, it might be politically dynamite, I don't know, but, you know, I'd like to know what the, I'd like to know if we can have a, you know, a rough idea what the cost would be.
Changing boundaries and putting a whole school that's in town to be outlining outside the schools and the country, you know, is going to be, the transportation alone, the dynamic change there is something that would be an ongoing cost, and one that would go up, because there's a lot of kids in town that are walking to school, I don't know, I just think the idea that there's certain kids really far away from where they're actually located at might not be a great solution for...
I don't think it'd be any more popular with parents in town than it would be with parents in the outline schools.
Well, I don't think we were, I don't think...
I just don't, I don't, I can't see it.
Well, I don't think we were, I don't think the proposal was to, one of the, one of the emails said, "Add the, add the pod to Robert Frost", and if, you know, maybe add a little bit up to Mark 20, I don't even know if that's possible, but then, you know, fill those expansions, you know, make Robert Frost to K5, a 678, then everything else, boundaries, you know, take care, take care of the rest.
Andy, I know you told us, how many students would a new-potted Robert Frost have?
About 150. If it was fully completed, added six classrooms.
So, about one grade, was it?
Yeah, one, one grade.
Roughly.
How easy is that to do up there, does doing something like that bring with it a bunch of STCs?
You've received the figures on what the anticipated range of cost would be to add six classrooms to Robert Frost, and I'd have to look back at that document, but it's in a...
I could, that's somewhere in the...
Full, six classrooms with an addition of cafeteria, which would be necessary, because if you're talking about, you know, 600, 700, 800 students, especially if you were to add more than six classrooms, you would require that, Robert Frost doesn't have a cafeteria as Jimmies, like similar to Eugene Field, that they feed students in and use for PE purposes, so cafeteria would be a requirement, as would an additional covered play area of some sort, you would think, or at least some options for consideration.
Yeah.
So, we have taken a look at that, the city has told us that there would likely be minimal traffic impact fees required if we were to expand Robert Frost, but that hasn't had a full traffic impact study, and again, those kind of studies are very expensive, and it's something we do once, once a plan is, is done and moving forward.
Yeah, I just, I like the idea of some more straight grade destruction in the district, I think we'd get some better results with the new standards coming, potentially.
Discussions on straight grades and also on school size are excised in our long-range facility task force meetings, and the number 600, if we were talking about, do you go with really large schools, is that, you know, efficient, from an efficiency standpoint? Does it make sense, how does that impact the educational programs? It seemed like the national, and I'm kind of going on the memory here, but the research had suggested that about 600 is about as big as you want to go in an elementary school before you start to see the negatives outweighing the positive efficiency and things like that. Then I also remember talking about, you know, evidence for the straight grades versus the, you know, our mixed grades, because at least anecdotally, that's been, you know, straight grades seem to be better for educational purposes, and certainly, probably in some subjects more important than others, but I think that the evidence, and Andy, you may remember better, that, you know, Linda tried to compile, you know, how did the kids do in, you know, once they get to the high school, because we've got really a comparison that we can, we can look at, and it doesn't seem like there's a significant difference really.
Some of your blended, blended classroom schools actually do better in, routinely, year after year than the straight grade classrooms, but then again, there are multiple variables with that as well, of course.
Yes.
But, you're correct, there, we did look at a white paper, and was provided each of you at the time of the Long Range Facility Planning Committee discussing the, that sort of tipping point between when student achievement, or at least the bulk of the research showed that student achievement was impacted in, or at least equalized when it came to a size of school, and that 600 number is, was pretty standard in most of the research, you get much bigger than that, and most schools find it difficult to maintain the academic achievement of students without a lot of extra effort or even money, for that matter with the big schools. I realize that some schools, Salem Kaiser's, one of them has middle schools of 700, 800, 900 students, even, I think Whittaker at one time was over 1,000, but they, they made concerted efforts to reduce those by constructing new schools in Salem Kaiser to get closer to that 600 student point. The, the other point I'd like to make, and I think it's very important to remember, is that you have, over the course of the last three years, have tasked two groups of community individuals to give you as much helpful information as possible to make distinctions about what would be as effective as possible in this district, and while I don't have the recommendations from 2012 in front of me, there were multiple recommendations that were based upon input from that task force... recommendations that were based upon input from that task force, community input that you had received about what is, what is, I'll use the phrase, the best fit for the district. Well, it's not perfect. And one community was definitely going to value something differently than another, but taking into account all of the information from a cross-section, I'm just thinking, especially that 2012 committee, cross-section of every community that you have in this school district about the values that they place on, on their education and, and the value of, or the need for change is based upon what we currently have. And what I recall about those recommendations, which you approved as a board, were the need to, or the value of maintaining all of your schools, the value of maintaining the K8 grade configuration, the value of, of not being disruptive to the education of students, if at all possible, and seeing if you can maintain as much of the, of the current status of schools as possible. Now, while there is entirely merit, David, you're correct, I mean, school districts change attendance boundaries, some do it very routinely. This school district, not so often, but I think we can all agree that something like attendance boundary changes is emotionally charged. And, and a case in point, when Monitor School was closed and that, and the attendance boundaries were adjusted in the north part of your district, or when Bethany School was closed a number of years ago, and those attendance boundaries were adjusted for that size of an attendance boundary adjustment, that took the lion's share of a school year. And so if you're talking about district-wide attendance boundary changes, I'll, I'll ask you to give serious consideration to, to the time it would take in order to, to, to charge another task force, to bring people together. And you're probably talking, in my opinion, only potentially a year and a half, two years? I don't know how long something like that would take, that would be a very large task when you want to consider the implications of attendance boundary changes, the potential of discontinuing transfers, the potential of another structural feasibility and study in this school district, which we haven't looked at, adding classrooms onto schools, admittedly, with a couple of exceptions, and I can cite those, and what that would require and the value that, that would bring to you. And so I think, I think you're in a very, pretty unique position in that you have all of the information that you have around Eugene Field, and, and this discussion, in my mind, would, would likely postpone any decision around Eugene Field for the next one and a half, two, maybe even three years. It would take quite a while in order to facilitate this. And that's, again, I'm, I'm no expert on structural additions or engineering or any of that sort, but when I think of the information that you've received to this point over the last three years, and what I think, what I believe the public generally wants, it's not what every single person in this district wants, but what the public generally wants based upon the input you received to this point, is that I, I don't know that you would end in a different place two or three years from now if you were to go through that process. I think you'd find yourself potentially right where you are right now.
Yeah, I think it's important to remember the work of the, of the task, of the last couple tasks, task forces, the long-range facilities, who, who their recommendations were, to, which we adopted, were to keep all our schools, you know, not keep all our schools functioning the way they are now as best we can. We have, you know, we have a good thing going in this district. We provide parent choice, we have, I know we, you know, there's always the thing about transfers and all this stuff, but that's why people come to this district, because we have, we have a good thing going with our variety of schools, with our community schools. People like it the way it is. That's one thing we've, we heard, is don't, don't change it. I don't think we can discount the work of those task forces and what they, what they've brought to us. Another thing we've heard about from our, our surveys from the last bond is to keep it simple, keep the, keep the cost down. And I'm like, like Andy, I don't know what it would cost to add on to, to some of the, some of the other schools. You know, I know Robert Frost would be expensive, but you're going to have to, you're going to have to float a bond to do that anyway, if you're going, if you're adding on. And I think, you know, for one thing, it'd be very complicated. You would, you would lose our in-district transfer policy. That would be gone. People wouldn't have a choice anymore. They would be, you know, somebody who was on the outside of town, but still in the in-town schools, okay, now you're going out here. Well, that's not going to be a popular decision on, on either side. You know, and in my conversations with some of the parents in the outline schools, they don't want town kids coming out there any more than the town kids' parents want them to go out there. So I just think, if you, you know, you would have to pass a bond, it would, like Andy said, it would take a long, long time to go through that process. I don't think we have that time for Eugene, for the Eugene Field problem, for one thing. And plus, if you're talking about attendance boundary changes and all this stuff, you're never going to pass a bond. I just don't think, I think people would be, it's such an emotional issue, I think people would be up in arms. I don't think you'd ever pass a bond to do it.
Well, if the goal is to have straight grades, I think that's a completely open discussion, there's, there's much more cost-effective ways to do that. We could combine Prattam and Central Hall, we could combine Evergreen and Victor Point, Buick Creek and, and Scotts Mills in one K8 school, basically, in two buildings, and achieve the same thing for really no cost.
So if I could jump on that.
No cost.
We're going to have to pass a bond no matter what. And I think, part of my thinking is, is that we have a greater likelihood of passing a bond, especially given our district visioning process, which is giving us a lot of information about what people in the district would like to see, what values they'd like to have honored, and especially if we do something for the entire elementary community, just as we've done for the high school age community. I think we have a much better chance of passing a bond than if it's strictly an in-town solution.
This is not. Part of the proposal here is to go out and.
I realize that. Security upgrade.
Security, security.
Technology.
And we have some buildings that are already full to capacity. I mean, I think a lot of, I agree with a lot of what you said, Tim, but I think a lot of what you said is just speculation based on lack of knowledge, because none of us know what, what this idea might, might present. We haven't looked at it. It's pretty much a brand-new idea, the idea of doing something for the entire elementary community and reconfiguring attendance boundaries and adding on to schools where it's appropriate to do that. It sounds like a lot, and it's really daunting. I mean, it's a new idea, new ideas always, always are, but I think it's worth looking at. For me, the most important thing to do is to do the right thing and do it once in a cost-effective way in this district, rather than do something that fails, try a bond request that might fail, and then use modulars, which are very short-term and expensive consumption of district resources. And that option also limits what we can do for the rural elementary schools, because it uses up all of our reserves. It's just, you know, it's, it's complicated no matter how you cut it. But I think, I think it's a disservice to the district not to look at this other option and flesh it out. It makes a lot of sense on its face in a lot of ways. It's very easy, you know, to sort of, to say, you know, that this won't work or that won't work, but we don't know that until we actually.
Well, I, I tend to disagree with that too, because I think in our discussions in the last couple of years as we've been dealing with this, I mean, we've been dealing with this for a long time. And in our discussions, I think we have not specifically looked at that type of plan, but I think we have, we've looked at numbers, we've looked at costs, we've looked at all sorts of things that, that, you know, that lead me to think that, that it wouldn't be a very doable option. That's just, that's just my opinion. And we're also, you know, part of this focus is, is Eugene Field. Eugene Field is in bad shape. Everybody has agreed that. Every survey we've taken is like, get kids out of that building. And I don't think we can lose sight of that. I think we need to, you know, and sure, other buildings in the district have, have issues also, but you chip away at them one thing at a time. We can't do it all at once. I've said it before, you know, if we pass a bond to solve the Eugene Field problem, then we have dollars to, to chip away at some of the other things. And I just don't think, I think we need to keep our highest needs in mind as we move forward also. Anything else from down here?
Go ahead, Tom. Don't get me started.
No.
We're waiting.
Yeah, I know you are.
I'll chime in. I thought there was a lot of, in reading a lot of emails from parents, there was a lot of, a lot of folks who thought going up to Robert, just expanding up to Robert Frost was good because it would allow, it would, they would have one less pickup and drop off. And this other solution, it, it changes the model in town. Right now, you've got K3, then Robert Frost, you know, you take it from a K3, a 4x56 to a 78 to the high school. Now you're a K5, 6, 7, 8 to the high school. You eliminate a move, and a building and a staff gets to know a kid, a child, that much longer. And I think that's, that I think is a secret of R-K8, that's why I like K8 so much, because the kids, the staff gets the kid for eight years, well, nine years. But anyway, I, I think a lot of parents might be very attracted to that.
And Tom, I can only cite the survey results that were done, and the community results that were done, and that was actually fairly close to split between town and rural schools, that rural parents appreciated their, their K8 configuration. And actually, a number of town parents appreciated the transitions. Well, I understand, and I, I get the minimizing transitions, I think that's good for, for student education too. But culturally speaking, I think in this community, some parents appreciate that. They built their students up to transition from third to fourth grade, from sixth to seventh grade, from eighth to ninth grade, of course. And while, while I, I get that, I understand that, I also know that, that parents really spoke very loudly, ultimately, that they, that they appreciate that.
I think it's a 2012 task force we had, that we actually talked a lot about transitions, and it wasn't the best for kids, and it's better not, not to have as many transitions. And we tried to push that a little bit, and heard a lot of clear from parents that are part, were part of that task force, that they liked it the way it was, and they preferred the transitions.
I think it's important to listen in the community, and if we keep hearing to keep the kids in town, I do think that at this point, and the more we talk to people, that Slater Street really is the best for a middle school and not necessarily a grade school. And, you know, do it right, do it once, keep it simple, but at the same time, do it right. I mean, I think moving the kids around, people can, people understand that, but you will upgrade Mark Twain, you will be upgrading Robert Frost, and you will be getting a fairly new school out of Slater Street campus by using what we have in the sense of the science wing only, and the gym not, anything else, we're ripping down the rest of it.
Multi-.
But, you know, that, this is, this is helping three schools, it's keeping the grade configuration and the variety of grade configuration out there, and I think there's a lot of value to that. And people have really, you know, people I've talked to, there's an overwhelming support for the leapfrog, and you, you, Slater Street as a middle school. And, you know, I, the rough numbers we had in the scenarios originally, you know, it's not the absolute cheapest, because in the scenarios we've received, you know, going just straight Eugene Field to Slater would be the least expensive. However, scenario two was moving it. And Eugene Field, expand Robert Frost, move current 4x5 Robert Frost students to Mark Twain, six, some, you know, that whole leapfrog thing. But I, you know, I think there's a lot of support for that, and it keeps the grade configurations the way that it has been, that have worked really well in our community and given options.
Yeah, I agree, Julie.
I think it is important to reflect back at the, on the, all of our experiences here in receiving public testimony. I'm thinking back to being on that, that boundary task force. And I remember proposing, because it seemed to make a lot of sense to me, not having the benefit of, I've been on the school board that time, so I was just new to the whole process. But I actually proposed that we consider combining Scotts Mills and Buick Creek, because it did seem to give us straight grades, it maxed better, better use the facilities of both buildings. But I tell you, that conversation lasted about 10 minutes, and people from Buick Creek that were there, the people from Scotts Mills, were just adamantly against it, the rush cleaning, were adamantly against it, because they saw that it would split, potentially split their community up amongst a couple of buildings. And it just, I mean, that was just a really decision from the start there. So even though there were some few people on the, on the group that said, yeah, it would make a lot of sense in terms of solving some problems, it just, nobody wanted to do it.
Yeah, we have had a lot of input in the last few years, in our community from different, the task, the task force groups we have put together to look at some of this stuff. We've had a lot of input, and I think we really need to keep, keep that in our minds. What they've told us, that, that the public ones, that people's opinions, I think we really need to keep that in our, in our minds.
Yeah.
Otherwise, why, why even have it?
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I, I'm exploring, I'm constantly exploring other options, because I, like this one here, it's looking just like the last one, they got shot down pretty big, it's getting expensive fast. And, and this is the right way to do it. I'm just trying, I'm trying to think of something that will actually get us some money, you know. We get these great recommendations, and they're, and they're good recommendations, I agree with them, but, and I, I don't, I don't mean to be glib, but there's, there's not a $25 million check standing on the back of them. You know, we can't get the funds to do it. That's, that's what, that's the problem I keep banging my head against. And it keeps me looking for other ways to, to get us, to get us till that big high school bond pays off, and then we can go ask, you know, request some good money from, from the voters game maybe, and do something nice again, and do it right. I am really concerned that we're, we're, we're going to end up doing something not right. And, and it's going to be, in 20, 30 years, they're going to be going, what are you guys thinking, you know? We're here working on this stuff, and you're going to do the underground plumbing, or the drainage is bad, or something. I just, I'm really worried that we're, we're going to get crushed from money.
So my proposal is try to get, get some numbers around, the scope, the scope is significantly different than, than the last one. It's much smaller.
Yep.
But until we know what numbers, we can tie each of these pieces of scope, we're just talking.
Yeah.
And the numbers could change, you know, and we get the numbers, it could change some of our ideas too. You know, it could put a whole different light on it. I just, yeah, back to these, I just, I like the way they give some direction.
Oh, no, I like them, they're good, and they're good, they give good direction for that, that proposal, it's great. Is there, what would it take to get us some numbers for this other proposal? Is there a reason, is there a reason we can't, because I wouldn't, you know, I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's, you know, I'm just, I'm just doing the kind of, geez, what would it cost? I mean, my goodness, if it's really a lot of money, it might have legs. If it, if it's close, then forget about it. I mean, I'm not, you know.
So what I can rely upon, Tom, and again, I'm not going to claim any, any credit toward being an engineer or, or a contractor, but what I can tell you is that the, the work that this district has done at new, multiple schools related to expansion, or at least changes, would very quickly, and I don't remember what the minimum percentage is, but very quickly, let's say if you were to add, pick a school, Buick Creek, add three classrooms or five classrooms to Buick Creek School, and make that a school of 400 students, that would likely meet the threshold, based upon what I understand. And David, we had a good conversation in Eugene Field Task Force about this, of what that minimum threshold is, that would require a full code compliance of the remainder of the building. And whether, you know, three or four classrooms would, would require that, because once it reaches a certain percentage, is what we were told at the time, once it reaches a certain percentage of the value of the building, it, it requires upgrades to the rest of the building, related to ADA and, and electrical, mechanical, and so forth. And so that kind of evaluation would be necessary at every school in, in order to determine that scope. That's what we've done at, at the Slater Campus, and that's some of the preliminary work we've done at Robert Frost, as well as what we believe those estimated figures to be. So I think until, until we specifically identify where those changes would be, what, which buildings would be added to, which buildings would be not, you'd have to have an evaluation. And, and a person could estimate those things, but there's also some compliance review. I'll, I'll give you some, an example related to compliance review. We did, when we closed Monitor School, took a look at placing a modular Buick Creek School. We did contact Clackamas County about that, and Clackamas County was, was very clear to us that we would have to do a traffic impact study if we were going to add a modular, because that adds the potential for, depending upon whether it was one or two classrooms, 30 to 60 kids. So there would be a traffic impact study done there. They said preliminarily, it would likely increase the size of the drain field in the school. There would also be some, some other concerns related to, to other compliance that we just didn't dig into, because we discovered very quickly that there was some expense to that that we hadn't anticipated. And, and so that's at Buick Creek. My sense is that would be the same at Scotts Mills, the same at Victor Point. Evergreen and Prattam, those, those schools, old lady kids, you know, there's, there's one way to get straight grade configuration at Evergreen and Prattam, and that's to combine those schools with neighboring schools. Similar to Owen's comment a little while ago, I think you've had boardrooms full of people from Evergreen and Prattam in the past, when there's been consideration about changes at those two schools, as any K8 school would. And, and so, again, I think, I think the consideration just has so many implications. Even coming up with a basic estimate, I, I think would require considerable amount of time in order to determine what that scope even looks like, and could we even do it? And then once we determine what that scope could look like, then getting in and doing some of the structural evaluation, visiting with Clackamas, Clackamas or Marion County, finding out what the code compliance rules would be with that. It's, the balance here, in my, in my mind, respectfully, to each one of you, the balance is, you have a pressing need with Eugene Field School, and are you as a board willing to put that need aside for two or three more years, potentially? Because it surely, in my mind, it's going to take longer than a year in order to determine what the rest of this district could look like, what the entire district could look like with, with changes that you're discussing here.
And also, everybody spend money. And also, if everybody's spending money, why in the world would we spend dollars on schools and on the edges of the school district when we have the depopulation in town here?
Yeah.
Do parents want the kids to go to school closer to their homes, not, not the other end of the district?
It's, well, it's like I said, and not to be glib, but we don't have a $25 million dollar check yet to spend. That's, I don't mean to live on that. And also, well.
But Tom, I think you're looking at at least a $25 million dollar check to add on to everything else too.
Yeah.
Easily.
And I think Andy brings up a good point with, you know, you start talking about closing a Pratum or an Evergreen or combining those schools, you know, we're filled up with, with parents from those schools. The same way if we start talking about attendance boundary changes and moving kids, say, from town schools to, to outline schools or moving outline school kids to town, which could happen. You're going to, it's going to be very unpopular. You're going to have as many parents from the town schools as you are when you talk about changing an outline school because parents from the town schools care as much about their schools and life, their configurations as much as they do now. And I go, I just go back to the fact that we have a good thing going in this district. This district has a lot of positive things with our configurations now, a lot of choice. Why change, why, if it's not broke, why try to fix something that isn't broke? I like what Julie said about listening to the community also.
Yeah. No, I understand. I, and I don't, and I don't talk about moving boundaries lightly. I, I went, I went to Monta Grade School, the building closed. I mean, that's, that's where I went to school at, so my alma mater got closed. And it caused some boundary changes to where my kids are going to school now in Scotts Mills. So I know what, I understand when I speak those words about boundary changes and it being very emotional. I've, I've been there and I've done that. I know what I talk about. So, I mean, I, I don't say that lightly and I know that the people who are hearing this are probably going, oh my God, I got you. But I mean, I know what I speak. And I don't say it lightly. I'm just, you know, it is, I'm just, my, my instincts are telling me that this bond is getting very, very expensive again. And I'm looking for other solutions. I've also been there.
So can I jump back in?
Yes, I'm done.
So we've had a lot of conversation here about, about the past, about task forces that were put together to address problems or issues here in the past, but we made a decision now that moves us toward the future. And I think in the process of making that decision and the process of the last failed bond request, there's been an enormous amount of education with the voters in this district. And I really reject the idea that the voters in this district have to have a dirt simple option. I think that they can sort out the complexities of an option that makes sense fiscally and educationally for the students. And I think that if we can present that to them, that you'll get really a good response to a bond request. I think if we don't do that, we may be back in the same position. So if you're talking about not being able to fix Eugene Field, or I mean, not being able to replace it, we may be right back in that same mode and lose time again. So I also want to say, I just don't think that it's a fair comparison, even off the cuff, to talk about traffic issues at Buick Creek School, which is right next to a major highway, and compare it to Scotts Mills School, which really sits kind of back in a little alcove and doesn't have any of the, the traffic issues that the state would be looking at with expansion there. I mean, to me, that's the logical, kind of a logical place to make that kind of, of an expansion for the future, especially given that Scotts Mills is a town. And, you know, attendance boundary changes sound, it sounds like a wholesale upset to the district, but it's not that at all. If you moved students from one, basically you're just shifting the edge of boundaries a little bit. Sorry, I don't mean to scare you, you know. So you're talking about North Avoclo students going to theoretically potentially an expanded Scotts Mills School versus coming to town. You're not really taking the town kids out of town and putting them way out in the country. You're shifting some kids that live in the country already over to another school setting. So I, I just think once again that there's a lot of speculation about something that we really haven't fleshed out, that we really haven't studied and we don't know that much.
I'm wondering, maybe a question for both, be David and Tom, because I, I don't want to misunderstand either of you. Are you thinking primarily about cost effectiveness of a business solution? I see Tom shaking his head, yes. Or are you thinking primarily about program advantages to the edge?
Yes and yes.
Yes and yes?
I think in my mind, it would be both. And I've been thinking about this a lot since this, this issue was broached publicly, I think, for the first time in a board meeting in our last regular meeting. And I think for myself at least, the more I think about it and the more I get input from other people who are starting to think about it, it makes, it makes a lot of sense, at least on a space. And it makes sense if we're going to be taking such a major step to at least investigate, see what we're talking about, see what the possibilities are.
I also think it's important to not lose sight of the problems at Eugene Field and that that's our major, major problem that.
Well, we made that decision, so I, I'm not trying.
Yes, but I'm not willing to push that off for another possibly five years, whatever it would be.
So just a question, kind of in response to that, if we end up going with your plan B, which is if we can't pass a bond, putting modulators at the site, at the Slater Street site and expending all of the district's resources, all of our savings, whatever we need to take out of the general fund to do a short-term and expensive option, what about the other schools, the three schools, two of them are rural schools that have significant life and safety issues with the seismic integrity of those buildings? And we're talking about Buick Creek School, Central Hall School, and Mark Twain Elementary here, Buick Creek School.
And I understand all that and all those issues. You know, we've, we've talked about modulators. We don't know if that's where we would end up. We would have to reevaluate. But I, you know, and David, you mentioned about, you don't think that, you think that the vote, you don't think that the vote, the simplicity of the thing, you don't think that, something about the way people understand it?
Do you want me to restate it?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think, I mean, there's a lot of talk about a simple option. And what I said, I know that what I said at the board meeting is pretty caustic, but I don't think it's the voters that couldn't understand the complexity of the last, the last presentation, the last program that we presented with a bond request. I think it's that the board couldn't make sense of it in trying to present it to the voters. It wasn't the complexity of it. It's just that the more voters looked at it, the more they said, what are you guys doing? What the heck is this? And I think now that we've had this educational period and people are, we've made the decision about Eugene Field, I think the voters can sort it out if we have a really good program that's fiscally sound and educationally sound and takes us into the future. Just one, one more quick thing and I'll shut up. I was, I was at meetings in Salem here a couple of weeks ago and the state's about to put our feet to the fire along with every other district in the state as far as common core standards and achievement expectations. We've had kind of a little respite, a little adjustment period here now, but they're talking about things like interventions and some pretty heavy duty things. We've had the carrot, now we're going to get the stick, I think. So I think it's really important that we look at the issues of student achievement and the best that we can do for our students educationally. That's a big part of our responsibility as a school board, not just replacing buildings and, and raising money.
Okay. Just on the last part of that, student achievement is always at the top of the list. It's never just about replacing buildings. We're talking about, one thing that we've talked about with the problems at Eugene Field, how that relates to student achievement. And that is, you can't deny that. You can't deny that, the problem with that building. And you talked, also talked about the complexity. I would agree. I don't think it's necessarily the complexity, complexity of the last bond or the, you know, the, the leapfrogging of kids that it's been blamed, that the failure's been blamed on. I think the bond was too expensive for one thing. And we didn't, we didn't have a, have everything planned like we should have. I totally agree with that. But along those same lines, I also think, and I hear, I hear you guys talking about, oh, we may not pass a bond, we may not pass a bond. I have heard so much, there is so much energy already behind, behind this. There's so much energy out there. I, every day I talk to people who say, keep moving, keep moving, you're doing the right thing, get kids out of Eugene Field. I, I think voters understand the issues with that building and I think, I think we get a bond passed. I heard one of the, one of the people who was on the, the last PAC committee supporting the, promoting that last bond, said, you guys are already ahead of where we were three days before the election. So I just, I don't know, that's, count me wrong, but I think there's a lot more positive stuff out there than negative.
Andy, to David's questions around the seismic uprising, there's going to be some work going on in grants.
Yes, yes. We'll, we'll be submitting at least one grant application, if not potentially two, relying upon ZCS to help us out with that. But those, that timeline is this summer. We just went to, excuse me, Grant Workshop through the C of last week by, related to the state seismic grant, and we believe we have two, two good candidates in our district between Buick Creek and Mark Twain. Those are your two top priorities. Based upon the ZCS engineering report.
Well, I could be wrong, but my, my first take here on all this is I just don't, I just don't see getting widespread support for the proposal. Now, you might be right. We might be able to come up with such a strong proposal that is, you know, well presented that we convince enough people, but just my, my experience in growing up in a, in an Evergreen district, I don't think it's probably that far off of probably any of the other rural districts. And hearing the conversations that I've, I've heard since being on the board and whatnot, I just don't see a lot of support for that. It just seems like it doesn't take very much for a person to vote no. And if it's, I don't want my kid to go there, I'm scared about this change here, that, I don't know, I just see it would be a really hard thing to get passed.
I don't doubt that it would be difficult.
We may get a lower number, lower number and maybe even some program, you know, some good, hopefully some good program reasons that we wouldn't present it anyway, but, you know, we may just exchange one for another.
Yeah, yeah. Both of these proposals would involve adding a pod to Robert Frost, so he's, so, so that cost is common.
Only if we did the, the K eight, the six eight at Slater.
Yeah, okay. Okay. I guess I'm just.
Which we could scope out as well. I mean, I'm certainly open to adding that to my, my proposal.
Oh, I thought we were going to get ideas for both, both a K three and a six eight over here.
That, that was my intention, but I'm hearing a lot of discussion about Robert Frost. And then to do that, that would allow us to do the, the six eight at Rock, at Slater here.
Yeah, to, I, I'm, I understand right. I think to do, maybe I missed the number, but to do a six, to make, to make Slater into a six eight means we have to add a pod to Robert Frost. You would have to add classroom space to Robert Frost. I'm up to a full pod, Tom, but I just depend on that, again, what the programming looks like at this building, what programming looks like at.
Right.
That's to Eugene Field and Robert Frost.
Correct, correct. And so that's, that's a commonality of the two plans. And so the difference would be.
What other plan?
Well, the, the proposal, the.
Well, if you're making.
David and I's role.
If you're making Robert Frost a K five, you're going to have to add on a whole lot more than what.
No, because it would be a K five and the ones that didn't fit would just boundaries and put them in the rural areas. And that's the controversy.
So it's not a proposal or a plan, it's an idea. But I think, for myself, it's an idea that has some merit. And since it was first floated, there's been increasing discussion, at least with people that have contacted me about that. So I guess the last thing I'd like to say is that, you know, our district visioning plan speaks very forcefully and had some length to the need to unify the district, to truly unify the district and the thinking of the district into one district some decades after or decade and a half after consolidation and sort of debalkanize the district. And I think if we can achieve that, even if the plan is complicated, takes a little more time, we can really do some great things in this district.
One other, and one other thing that I remember the consultants who are doing our visioning process came back to us with, after they did all their community meetings, one of the things that they most strongly came back was that, they said, people do not want change. People do not want, keep the case the way they are. I remember that distinctly. They said, don't change the schools. That was the one thing they, that they came back with, with us. So anyway, any, any other, we could move along.
I just, I just, I just want to repeat again for those watching, I've been through boundary changes. It's emotional, it stinks. I know what I'm saying. Been there, done that, I got the, I got the, I got the bumper sticker. And so I don't, I don't float that lightly. So, got the T-shirt, I guess, I missed that.
My experience with that is that the parents got more emotional than the kids. The kids went to school and it's like, okay, you can go home now, Dad.
Okay, moving on, reviewed draft district timeline for possible November 2014 bond election. Andy, do you want to?
Yeah, you, each of you have received a copy of this, I think, at your last meeting and it was, it was the intent of, if you chose to authorize a resolution to place an election on the November 4th ballot and you began with the November 4th ballot and worked backwards. So I put in front of you a draft timeline of more, more of the global tasks that would be required. There'd be some very specific tasks that would be required as well. But you'd have to have your ballot title and measures submitted to the county elections department by September 4th, so 60 days ahead of time. And if you were to do that by September 4th, then you would have to authorize a resolution sometime in August because it would, it would take, it would take a week or two to get that, all that information put together, placed in, in the county elections department. So, so that's a, that's a draft schedule in front of you. And if you, if you step back even further and go to where we are right now, May and June, you'll see that, in fact, I think this lends itself somewhat to your conversation tonight, all of you for that matter, and that is related to program or project management. In other words, having, bringing someone on board that could take the information that you currently have, and you have a lot of it, and put that together in a package. So you could flesh out better what, what an anticipated bond amount could look like using, using conversion of the Slater Campus to another school. I don't have the expertise to do that. We need to bring people on to do that. And when you do that, you do that through an RFP process and that's also one of your agenda items to, tonight is for you just to take a look at the timeline and, and basic information related to that RFP. But I, I think there's merit to getting that additional information because I think it'll answer some of your questions. And it will, it will help solidify what the cost to convert the Slater Campus will and the cost to modify the Robert Frost or even Mark Twain campus would be for the purposes of this. You have made a decision to put a bond on the ballot, but, but obtaining additional information about your current train of thought, or at least the majority of you, related to the use of the Slater Street campus, I think in my mind, would be very helpful information for this body to either make a decision or to choose to do something else.
Well, I'd like to point out on your timeline here, July 14th, you have defined projects code, anticipated project bond amount.
Can be very quick.
That's only seven or eight weeks away. That's a lot of work to be done. And that's why I think we really need to get our arms around these, these different scenarios as quickly as possible so we can see if we can determine what the scope really will be.
Yeah. And, and I agree, Wally. And again, I, I also know that what, what you've done over the, with, with all the work that you did with the last bond election, and this, this costs you money. So we're, I mean, we're trying to be as attentive to not spending a ton of money on this, that's for sure. But it does cost you money in order for you to come up with the, the scope and objectives for a project like this. And to bring someone on board really is the, is the only way in my mind to do that because you don't have that expertise. So we, so we hire somebody to do that work? Correct. Do you have a rough dollar amount, total cost? I think if we, if we use the comparison of the last project manager that you hired that did a lot of pre-planning work, my sense is this could be in the 10 to 15 thousand dollar range.
So discussion on the timeline? So that brings us to the discussion about the RFP, the request for proposals. I think it's a good place to get started, bring somebody on who has the knowledge and expertise to flush some of this stuff out.
There are quite a few legal requirements for an RFP like this and they're, they're described there, especially with the, the calendar and, and. there, especially with the, the calendar and, and the RFP itself is about 22, 23 pages of legal, and it needs a lot of legal information that, that legal counsel has helped us put together. Joel Smallwood also has some, some pretty significant experience with, with RFPs and has reviewed this as well, and provided some updates, so I...
Is this something...
It's an effective tool.
Is it something we need to formally vote on to approve, or just...
Well, you, the, the action that you took to, you know, you surely can, but the action you took to approve the recommendations helps kickstart this in the end place, and you need some additional information in order to make an informed decision.
Yeah, I guess, okay. Anything else, guys? Okay.
And you would take formal action, I'm sorry to interrupt him, you would take formal action on the actual selection?
Yes.
At that point?
Yeah, okay. Okay. Potential board meeting dates, additional work sessions, summer extended work sessions. We took the retreat out of that more quietly than... Additional work sessions.
Are you looking to schedule some tonight, or are you just warning us that there might be additional ones?
Well, there might be additional ones, we can warn them.
Or we'd guess.
Yeah, I would guess, yeah.
I'm ready.
Did you, did you think we needed to schedule anything, Andy, or wait?
Your, your next meeting, you've got Memorial Day coming up next week, and that's why you're having the meeting tonight instead of next Monday. And the, the RFP will be published by then, and hopefully we'll be receiving. So I, I don't know that you'll have a ton of, I mean, to, to meet prior to your next meeting, which is, which is June 9th, but I would encourage you to be prepared to, to meet potentially the following Monday, the 16th, based upon the information that you've received by that time. And, and potentially even, potentially even meet every week beyond that, if, if this board were to choose to bid with a November election, at least over, in that period of June, when you get, between June and July and August.
To decide if specifics...
I think at least leave those options available to you in order to, to make your decisions.
Okay, let's, did we schedule an extra work session for June 16th, then?
Oops.
Is that the right date?
Sixteen.
Okay.
Yes.
Let's, then, if we scheduled that, we can pin it down for sure, our regular session in June, but let's all kind of plan on it.
I question right now if we'll have anything solidified to talk about then as well, but we can decide.
We can decide at the next meeting, yeah, okay.
I will be gone on 16th, FYI.
Okay. Keep it in the back of your minds. Summer extended work session, that's something we usually do in August?
Yeah, did that in the third, third week of August, the last, last summer, and I think it was a similar weekend the, the year prior. It's, it's your decision, but I, I found those four-hour sessions to be very helpful, and you get some good conversation in, and, and also have opportunity to have some additional training, or maybe some directions to, to whatever the board would like to have that evening.
So, given the fact that we're going to have so many special work sessions, and we've done the district visioning processes, it really, do you think it's really necessary that this one year, all leave? You might not have additional training?
I would say we don't need any training. Well, we probably need training. Maybe we don't, I'm sure we need training, but maybe we can put that off for...
Well, actually, we can use that time to do some of the work required.
Very much so.
Broke it up, we're going to have a tremendous amount of work.
Yeah, and especially if we have...
Extremely ambitious bond timeline.
If we have, if we have, you know, meetings, work sessions more often, I would propose we just kind of wait till July and see what, if we need to have an extended one in August, or just continue on with our weekly meetings.
Sure, no problem.
Maybe not weekly, but it is summer.
Whenever we can be at summer, and I've got no wedding on Friday first.
Then these here's weekly meetings. Okay. Okay, anything else on those?
I just like, oh, I'd just like to add on the, you know, we're, it looks like we're going to be voting on the...
The proposals?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, so, I, I can count to five. So if, if we add that, the, add to that, add the, what it costs to add that pod up to Robert Frost in the cafeteria, because that would be kind of part of the basis of this other proposal, that would be good information if, for some reason, we start adding all this stuff up and it gets expensive, and we want to explore that, that's good information for that other proposal. Because this is a good scope of work for, for the Slater.
I think it's...
How would you add that on, Wally?
Just to include, have a number seven, add pod, cafeteria, and play area to Robert Frost. I think I agree, I think it's, we're kind of creating a menu here that would help us understand the scope of cost.
That's kind of a question that's kind of been bouncing around for...
Everybody asks that question, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, so, what did you put, Andy, or Wally, for number seven?
Add pod, cafeteria, and covered play area to Robert Frost.
Okay, so that would be number seven. Okay. So, we have an action item, consideration of these proposals for the use of Slater. Is there a motion?
Sure, I'll move my motion. Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, B, to give, give a direction to develop scope and cost for projected bond, potentially target for the November election, that would do the following: remove the old three-story section of the Slater Street campus, remove the egg science building, remodel and upgrade the remaining single-story structures on the Slater Street campus, infills the Slater, Slater Street campus with new construction to provide new educational space, provide safety and security upgrades to all the district school buildings that are used for students for various consultants' reports, provide technology updates to our buildings, and add a, at Robert Frost, add a pod, cafeteria, and covered play area.
I second it.
Okay. Any further comments?
Just a question about the proposal for security upgrades at the rural elementary schools. When we talked about that, we looked at a whole range of options. Is that what we're going to do here, is look at kind of everything that the consultant suggested and then pick from those? Because some of them were, we looked at and we said, you know, why would we do that? And some of the discussion came back to, you know, for example, one of the most effective things that you can do, and one of the least costly, is to have security cameras at your schools. I mean, it's both a deterrent and an opportunity to know what's going on.
My expectation would be the high-impact ones. We also talked about fencing. Fencing is needed at several of the schools. Locks on doors, we talked about, at a couple of schools, we talked about windows at the classrooms, so...
So we'll have an opportunity to look at all of those options as sort of a menu, and then sort out, and have a conversation, what we think is most appropriate.
That'd be my expectation, yeah.
Maybe update the work that was done before or something.
Okay. Good.
Okay.
And we have those. And Wally, I'm sorry, we have, we have three of the fencing projects completed at the rural schools at this point, and, and hope to have the rest of those finished within the next month.
Perfect.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Awesome. And one more action item. We have a new principal coming to Silvercrest and Victorpoint Schools, Jamie McCarthy. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and I'd like to introduce Jamie, he's here tonight. Jamie, could you please...
I'm glad I carried you.
Good to have you here. You, you want to say anything, or?
Aye, I look forward to it.
There's only one other principal here, so you won't get stuck by him, though. Nobody timing you.
That was a lot of fun to watch, and I look forward to it.
Good to have you here, Jamie. We've heard good things, so good to have you. Okay, no other business were adjourned, thank you.